Call the city of Staples City Council to meet in order and start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, welcome. We'll get started right away with the approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Mary and a second by Roy. Any discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item three is to approve our consent calendar, which is the minutes of previous meeting and payment bills.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ron and second by John. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item four is to consider second reading and adoption of ordinance five thirty-eight regarding the sale of property.
Five thirty-eight is in your packet. We did the first reading on this three weeks ago at our last meeting. Basically, this is that driveway area, the two lakes and the small east-west chunk out at Voyager. So basically transferring the ownership of that property to them, retaining utility easement under the same property for the sewer and water that we have out there. And they can go ahead and pay those and maintain it.
Want to make that motion?
Second.
Motion by Roy and second by Doug. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item five is to consider approval of resolution eighteen seventy-seven, accepting donations from the Staples Lions Club. Five hundred dollar donation for the bike rodeo.
What's that? Acceptance?
Motion by Mary and second by John. Discussion? Okay, not hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Item number six is to consider authorizing Jessica Zetstriggi to have transaction authority for accounts at First International Bank and Trust.
So Jessica is our new utility billing clerk, started at the beginning of June. And so we removed Darcy from the account, want to add Jessica on.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ron, second by Mary. Discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number seven is to consider approval of William Slater to operate a taxicab service within the city of Staples.
So a copy of the application for the taxicab license is included in the packet. Mr. Slater is here this evening to be able to answer any questions that he has. But has met the requirements as outlined in the application from an insurance standpoint and so forth. And he is interested in operating taxi cab in town here. Mr. Slater, if you have any thing that you want to add to that?
No, not really, I'm just helping the community and stuff.
Great.
They're helping to make sure appointments.
Yeah, it's a needed service, that's awesome. I say it's a needed service, I think that's really awesome. So I guess I'll make a motion.
Was that a motion, Ron?
That was a motion.
Oh, seconded. A motion by Ron, second by Roy. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, how, are you gonna operate that twenty-four seven or what's the, how is it gonna be?
Well, once we get everything all put together and like that, right now I'm the only employee who can make everything up and going, right?
Right.
And then, yeah, the plan is that I'll have one man twelve hours and then a guy twelve hours. So it'll be twenty-four hours.
And who regulates that? Who regulates taxi cabs? Is that DOT or who's that that does that?
It must be DOT because it's definitely a commercial.
Yeah, all the insurance and all of that stuff. It's all, you know, it's all commercial.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number eight, and that's to consider approval of request for still lefties, which is do a business as Lefties Bar and Grill, to expand the patio area to the north of the building. Like we kinda talked a little bit about this at the last meeting and it's like since then, Leo and Kristen have given us some information, so.
So in your packet is a lot of information that they provided, some photos and, you know, kind of a description of what they want to be able to do out there. As we discussed three weeks ago, back in twenty thirteen, there were requests, I believe, from Twisted and Lefties at the time to do the outdoor sale and consumption. And at that time, the council basically identified four different things that needed to be mapped. And, you know, one of them is that outdoor sales and consumption must be properly contained, and all sale and consumption of alcohol must be properly managed. Number two, all containment structures, decking, fencing, et cetera, must be attached to the principal structure of the premise, holding the on-sale license. Number three, all containment structures must obtain building permit and be constructed of standard fencing materials and/or construction materials. Snow fence, chicken wire, et cetera, is not allowed. Number four, all requests for outdoor sales and consumption at an on-sale licensed premise require council review of a submitted plan and are subject to the city to sit down and approve. So those were the, you know, basically the four things that the council at the time in twenty thirteen identified. You know, so then it went on in that meeting, the requests from Lefties, which is where the fence currently is over there right now. And then there was also the outdoor area over at Twisted, both of which were approved. So in conversations with Leo, basically what he's interested in doing is sliding that, you know, that fence to the east, still part of the bar property, and increasing the size of that. And I think they did a pretty good job in their, in their proposal identifying what, you know, what the benefits are to being able to do that. The other thing in the meantime, Leo has put up a privacy fence along the north property line, which I believe is a benefit to the residential neighborhood to the north, so.
I make a motion, we allow them to move the fence to the property line on the east.
Second. Okay, motion by Doug, second by John.
I talked to the property owner also and they were thrilled with all the hard work you've done, so.
Nice.
I don't know if I would have sided with them, but I would have at least considered it. You know, if they, somebody's got an issue and they live there, it at least has to be considered, so. But he was, he said, man, he's been working, working hard out there, so he seems to like it, so. For what it's worth.
Any other discussion?
So the parking, it's a parking lot behind the, that's what it's gonna be, it's gonna expand that way, right?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, not hearing any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Good luck with, with Leo. Oh, there he is. That's all I saw was the reflection, Leo, sorry. No, good luck with it. All right, we'll move on to item number nine, and that's committee reports. We have two of them. The first one would be Public Works. Scott.
We started off the meeting last week with a tour of the wastewater treatment plant. If any council members would like a tour, you can let me know and we can arrange it. It's, it's kinda neat, what all goes into treating wastewater. It seems simple, but there's a lot into it. So if you'd like a tour, just let me know and we can make it happen. Next thing is, the Zurich River sent out a survey. They're gonna do an onsite interview with us. They're sending this out member-wide. We don't need to go through it all, they're just looking for concerns that we might have. So if, if there's anything that jumps out at you guys, let me know and I'll include it when, when I meet with them. Third thing is kind of interesting. We were informed a couple of weeks ago that it's possible that, and this would be nationwide, that there may not be enough capacity this summer to, to serve the entire grid. There, there could be rolling blackouts or they could be asking members to fire up their old generating units and things like that. So far, all, all we've done, or all they've asked is that we, right now, we come up with a plan to address this if it does happen. Minnesota Power is our, is our transmission provider. They, they don't foresee asking the city of Staples to have to curtail load, but it is a possibility. The, the best way to do that would be to initially ask people to cut down. You know, turn the AC off and not use their ovens and things like that. Next item would be to, to ask some of our customers to generate, you know, and even some of our facilities, like our wastewater treatment plant and water plant, things like that. And then the third thing would be to actually take customers offline, manually disconnect them so we can, so the grid can maintain integrity. This is, this is just informative. This is, I, I don't want to spread panic because there shouldn't be any right now. It's just that it's, it's tight on what they're predicting for load in the summer and what the capacity is. So it's something that we'll be prepared for. We, like I said, we just found out a couple of weeks ago. And I have reached out to some of our larger customers. And then Joel and I are working on different plans, different contingencies, things like that. So I just want to repeat, this, this is not definitely happening. It's, it's not a for sure thing and there is no cause for panic. I think that we could take one customer off and trim our load by fifteen percent. So, and, and they have generation. So I, right there puts us in a pretty good spot. And I have reached out to them and talked to them about it. So anyway, it's, this is just for your information, as things develop, I'll obviously keep, keep the council informed, but this is what we know initially.
Do you know what's creating this problem or what?
Um, just population grows, we, we use more technology. Just, you know, even, even things like electric cars, fewer fossil fuels, which, I mean, I don't want to get into a, a political debate, which it seems like it ends up being, but it's, you know, we take fossil fuels offline and, and use renewables. They just can't compete with things like coal. But obviously, there's good and bad. But we just, we use more electricity for all the, the times that we, you know, we try to cut back and things like that. We cut back on changing condensant bulbs to LEDs, but then we, you know, we plug in five, six, ten devices, you know, so it's, it's things like that. And then they're predicting a hot summer and.
I don't think they get much hotter than last year. We had a brown last year.
Yeah. But anyway, and if you got any questions, you want to reach out to me, that's, that's perfectly fine. And then the last item I have is that would, I would like council action on, and this has been recommended by the Public Works Commission, is that we approve a proposal from Bolton and Mink for engineering services for the two, twenty twenty-five underground project. We've talked about a couple of times, Fourth Street in northeast. This is, this is taking into account the, the county share. And then the reason that we're approving it early is so that we can get on the funding list in time. So we want to have a, a plan in place so then we can apply for funding in time and hopefully get some when twenty twenty-five rolls around. And if you look at the agreement, the, the second page right at the top, it kinda lays out the, the timeline. So you can see they'll, they'll do initial work right now, getting some staking and things done like that. And then, so they can submit the project for funding in twenty twenty-three. And then the last page, you can, you can see the cost, which is substantial, but it's the going rate. And then they did, it's hard to predict construction, you know, construction costs three years from now, so they, they added twenty percent, just to be careful. And forty percent for the county, sixty percent for the city. And again, if anybody has any questions.
The, the engineering stuff, do they, is that, I mean, we always seem to have Bolton and Mink. Do we ever consult with anybody else that, that might, you know, I mean, do we ever get bids or anything on engineering to find out if they could do it more recently?
We haven't in a while, it's, it's not something that would be necessarily opposed to. We did look, or we did reach out to Todd County, to their engineer, and just had him take a look at it and see. And some, what they've seen, other projects they've worked on, this is pretty comparable to, to what they're seeing elsewhere.
From a cost, you mean from a cost standpoint?
From engineering costs and construction costs.
As a percent.
As a percent.
Yeah, for, for other projects where you're starting with kind of preliminary design through funding, final design, all the assessment components and calculations of, of benefit, all the way through construction, staking and inspection, so. And obviously Todd County has a dog in the fight here too, because they're, you know, paying for, you know, anticipated about forty percent of this. And Lauren indicated that, you know, they've done other, you know, other projects recently, both with Bolton and Mink and with Seth and that's.
Yeah, I guess if we're spending a hundred grand, you know, or, or a million dollars on something else, it would be, we would definitely have some competitive bidding done on, you know. I just, I'm just curious, but I mean, it seemed.
Yeah, and one thing I would say, if you, if you find an engineer that you work well with, I've been places where we've had bad experience with, with engineers and it's a, it's really a big difference between, between a good one and a bad one. And, but not saying that, that it has to be this one hundred percent of the time, but.
Well, they just, yeah. They just did our sewer plant too, so.
But I mean, I would say that we, you know, we've, we've worked pretty well with Bolton and Mink on that. I mean, they haven't been perfect, but.
They, yeah, they seem to be the, the choice of selection for, for a lot of projects in a lot of communities. I don't know why that is, but they certainly are highly chosen, so.
And we do have somebody close by that, you know, Phil Martin, he's presented here before, that he does take pretty good care of us.
So this, this nine fifty-eight, one sixty-eight, what is that? That's the total cost?
That's just for engineering services.
The estimate.
The estimate, yeah. And that's, that's about twenty percent of the projected project costs, which as Gerald said, that's right in that range of percentages.
Buckets.
Yeah, if you can save three percent off of that, that's a lot of money.
The destruction, the estimate at this point is about four and a half million dollars.
Yeah, okay. And you're saying that we don't normally get bids for it, but you're not opposed to it?
Right.
Most, most of the time, it's a percentage that you're looking at, a percentage of construction cost.
So they're, they're gonna bid a percentage of the cost, yeah.
When we did the overpass with federal money, we went out and did, actually what they called it was an RFQ, which you have to do with federal money. And that's not, that's not asking for a quote or an estimate. They submit proposals and tell you about their qualifications. Then you identify the firm you're gonna work with and then later you get, you know, what the cost estimate would be. So that's federal, we've had to do that on airport projects and on the bridge, because that was federal.
So.
We have been, I mean, we've been working with them on.
Yeah.
Other projects nearby and, and parts of this prior. You know, it was when the county informed us that they were gonna do resurfacing, that we really dug in deeper into this project. We had been working with them on some stuff on Fourth Street already. And then one thing that, that we should note is that, you know, when they submit for funding, hopefully, a good portion of that will be grants.
Yeah.
Not just loans, so.
And, and whether we get bids or not, we're still gonna pay. It's not like we're gonna get, we're gonna pay considerably less. It's just like you said, it's a percentage, so it's just gonna be an expensive cost. Engineering is an expensive cost, no matter, no matter what you're looking at.
Yeah.
So what Lauren Philbaum had indicated, that he has seen some engineering budgets go up as high as twenty-five percent of the construction cost when you're including the construction services, you know, the onsite inspection, the staking, you know, all of that kinda stuff. And if you take that out, you're down to that ten, fifteen percent, which we probably see, you know, a little bit more often on projects where we don't have that construction stuff.
And who are we looking to to get grants from and is that?
It would be through the state.
So bonding dollars? No?
More than likely PFA. They put that, put some of that in here. We'll take it, so the PFA has their clean water revolving fund and drinking water revolving fund. That would be one place that they've identified. And that's, that's part of getting started early so that we can get on that list. We did a similar thing with the wastewater plant. And then you wait to be identified for funding, so anticipate twenty-five, but, you know, it could be later than that potentially.
The actual project, based on the funding?
Right.
Yeah.
But until we do the, you know, do the preliminary engineering and get an actual engineer's estimate, we don't, we don't know what, what we're looking at for sure.
I'll make the motion to enter into the agreement with Bolton and Mink on the Fourth Street project.
I'll second it. Okay, you had a motion by Mary and a second by Roy. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Is that everything, Scott?
Yep, that's, that's all I got. Summer Conference is coming up, MMUA Summer Conference. It's a good conference for policymakers and for managers, so if anybody's interested in attending that, let me know and I can get you registered.
All right.
That's all I got.
Thanks.
Yep, well, thanks. Move on to the Economic Development Authority, Melissa.
Thank you. We met on May twenty-fourth. It was mostly an updating meeting where projects are in the works and we're just continuing to update. They did make a motion to do the annual sponsorship to Todd County Development Corp., fifteen hundred dollars for the year. It's been typically an ongoing sponsorship that we have done as they do a lot of work in our community as well and do a lot of partnerships with myself and the EDA here. A big conversation that we had was around the small cities repayment dollars. In two thousand seven and two thousand thirteen, we did receive Small Cities Redevelopment Grant through the state, well, federal slash state slash, worked with Central Minnesota Housing on it. And that was to do commercial and residential rehab. With those dollars that, now that we received some of those loan dollars in payment back to ourselves, we can create a fund. And so we're looking at what to do with those dollars and what kind of fund to create. It has to be comparable to the original program, in which case for, for like commercial redevelopment or work to be done, it was a forty percent, one percent loan, a zero percent forgivable loan, and then a twenty, or forty percent, forty percent, and then a twenty percent owner equity. And that could be done however, whether they took a loan out or had cash on hand. So we're looking at that and then working with other communities to see what they've done with their repayment dollars. So something that we're going to be, we've created a committee to work on and will be, it will, ultimately, we'll be creating it at the EDA at some level. This committee will look at it in depth and then it'll go to the EDA board, which would then come to a recommendation to the city council to get that implemented, is that it's actually city dollars, not EDA dollars. So just know that that's coming down the pipeline. We did submit a, a letter of interest to the Blandin Foundation for a hundred and fifty thousand for implementation of the downtown revitalization plan. If that is approved, they're, well, first we have to be invited to apply for the full application. They had a lot of applications come in, so they're taking their time to consider it. So their turnaround is going to be within a week to let you know. Now they have extended that out so they can put some real deep thought into these applications. So waiting to hear if we're asked to apply for the full application, in which case we're, we are going to continue to utilize the Blandin Foundation's program if they, if we do get to move forward. And then also looking at additional dollars from other areas to do that downtown revitalization implementation. First Children's Finance worked with the school district. They're looking at expanding their daycare, childcare program. And so they'd be looking to hire on a new teacher. Because we did a plan with First Children's Finance through the Initiative Foundation, it was twenty nineteen, twenty, early twenty twenty, we were invited to apply as an invitation-only grant, so worked with the school. Hopefully, they can get the funding they need to hire that additional teacher and add additional slots. Otherwise, it was updating on the revitalization, the five-year plan. The five-year report has been sent over to CLC, worked with them on reformatting it, so they should be getting it printed here. I'm hoping to have it back by the end of June to disperse out to the community and everyone. Otherwise, that is all I have unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
Thanks.
All right, well, I'll move us to item number ten, which is open forum.
A few weeks ago, I was with, it's kind of, it's kind of.
Yeah, why don't you, Blake, just come up?
I don't know if everybody knows. I'm Blake Gerard, and this is my wife, Lynette. We just got married like two days ago. But.
Getting used to that yet?
Kinda. So we, we just took over Williams Four O Nursery a little over a year ago. Bought it from my grandpa, got it from his dad, who got it from his dad, so on and so forth. Few weeks ago, we noticed some new trees being planted up and down the city streets. And I had the pleasure of speaking with Gerald and I don't remember who else was helping install those trees that day. But I, I did ask the question of where the trees came from. And Gerald, you know, gave me feedback and said that they came from Swedberg's Nursery out of Battle Lake, Minnesota. And that's all I said and I turned around and I left. About ten minutes later, my grandpa, who I bought the business from, went outside and asked the same question and got the same response. And they chatted for a few moments and did their thing. So later that day, I made my way over to Chris's store there at True Value, had a conversation with him, asked him as to where the trees came from and why they came from there. And heard the response of, I didn't know about it. So we had a long, long conversation. I've known Chris my entire life, used to live right across the road from him. But had a long conversation as to where these trees came from and why, why these trees weren't purchased locally. And then later on that day, I spoke with Gerald. To resolve this issue and to find out why the trees were not purchased within. Our own city limits, our own nursery here in town, and not the only nursery here locally. And I know there's actually other nurseries closer than Battle Lake, Minnesota, but. And then, then again, after speaking with Gerald, I heard the response of, well, we didn't know that you guys were gonna have trees and shrubs. My initial response to that was, the phone number at Williams Fourl Nursery hasn't changed in over four years. And the location hasn't changed in ninety-five years. So to hear that we didn't know you guys are gonna do trees and shrubs this year was pretty disheartening because. It's a simple phone call, a simple stop by. Hey, are you guys doing trees and shrubs this year? And we would've been glad to supply the city of Staples with boulevard trees. And the correct trees actually to be planted up and down our city streets. So I'm asking for a report or an invoice of what you paid for those trees. Cause I don't know exactly what you paid for the trees, but the price tag was left on the one outside our store. And it was a, for example, it was a crabapple tree for a hundred and ninety-five dollars. I have the same exact crabapple tree in my store right now for eighty dollars. So just to put things into perspective, I'd really like a copy of that invoice, I'd like to know why it didn't reach a council level to be voted on. And I'm here with many other people who are pretty upset about this issue. I expressed my thoughts to Gerald about how this isn't the first occurrence that the business owners in the city of Staples have been treated. Pretty poorly. To hear them preach shop local. You know, the Chamber, the Discover Staples and the City of Staples sure likes to preach. Let's shop local, let's support local, let's help everyone local. And, and I, I express that this isn't the first occurrence that I've had, this isn't the first occurrence that the, I'm the only business that's had this type of issue. There's many other business owners in this town that are pretty upset. About why our tax dollars are not being spent within our town. So Gerald, do you have that invoice for me?
I just want to know if you're gonna do a rectify situation.
Well, you know, I'm just, I, I think, you know, we all acknowledge that, yeah. A phone call could've been made and there's, I mean, it, it's, it's in the past, I'm not, you know, we, we, we're all, we can acknowledge that and agree on.
And the past has never changed a bit in my life.
No, I, I get that, but we can't, we can't, we can't change the past, so making it, having the discussion here tonight, the discussion. That Gerald and Blake have had and just making, I think it's all, it, it, it's just. We have to move forward, we have to understand the situation, we can't rectify what happened.
Well, my question is, it looks like there's more trees that are waiting to be planted. Are they purchased or?
No, and I think, and I think Blake and Gerald have started to have that.
Well, we talked about that at, at Park and Rec today, we've got at least six more that need to be planted and I believe there's even more than that because. The Goffs had lost one up in front of your house, which came up, I think you called that day, right Mary Jo? And then I think there's another one down on Fourth Street that. There's no leaves, you know, so I would guess there's probably at least eight. More that we do wanna plant and we talked about it at Park and Rec and we're gonna get ahold of you to find out what you got, so.
My question is, did any of the council members know about this or, I mean, I know it was probably not a huge.
This is, this is not when it comes to comms.
Who, did any of these guys know about it or who made that decision? I'm not sure if anybody, other than one person that lives in that direction, then why would they pick that?
Well, first of all, it was me that picked it at the recommendation to Kevin Grunoff, so I don't know where you're getting the that direction thing, but that's. That person was not involved in that decision-making process. Now, no, that's, that's exactly where, cause we have gotten some there before and they have, what I was told is they have really good trees. But anyway, I, I went down, I talked with Blake and Lynette and Frank and Ronnie, we were, we were down there, you know. You know, explained that it was my understanding that they were not doing trees. Not that they didn't have any trees this year or last year, but they weren't doing it, so I apologize to them for that. There's nothing I can do about it, they're planted, I'm not gonna dig them up and put them in the pot and send them back. But we do have more trees and we'll be doing more planting in other locations next year, so I think that.
Has, has any of the other trees planted up and downtown prior to this year been purchased from Williams Fourl Nursery here in town?
I can't tell you, I have no idea, I haven't been involved in that.
Well, hopefully just. You know, when they, when you purchase something, you know, we check out our local stores. Because recently, we are gonna have a town.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, I, like I said, I apologize to them, but my understanding they didn't have trees and I'm sincere in that.
I'd like to, I'd like to say something.
Yeah, yeah, Virgin's Greenhouse also isn't local either, by the way.
I'd like to say something. So I'm on the Park and Rec Board and there's about eight of us, I think, around there. And we, we attended that meeting and we talked about trees. So I wanna say that there was more than Gerald that it was an oversight. It was an oversight on our part as well, cause no one at that meeting said anything about your store, okay, so. It was an oversight on more than his part and I feel terrible about it. But I want to just make sure that you realize that it's not just Gerald. One of us, one of us. No, I just wanna say though, I wanna make sure that it's out there, that there was a park board that was made aware of that, that. And, and we've got people on that park board that are very astute and very alert. They've done lots of trees for the city. And it, it did not occur to any of us to say that, so it wasn't, it was an oversight on, on multiple levels.
Way more than oversight.
Yeah.
It was an oversight.
Way more than oversight, I, I actually manage three different towns, Wydenas, Staples, Motley.
I don't, I must, I don't do that.
I live in this town and when I drive down the main road, I see William's Fourl, it's been there since the day I've been born. If you live in this town, how didn't you know William's Fourl is here? How didn't you know Rosenbells is out there? How did it not even come over in a discussion of people from this town? I came to his place to get trees for my business, when I'm in Wydena, I go to Wydena, when I'm in Motley, I love her the closest one in Motley. That's how the company I work for runs their business to support the local people that are supporting them.
Gerald, did you, I, I wanna clarify one thing that was said in all of this hoopla because it. Was there something about the availability of the trees and the timing of ordering and the timing of planting?
Well, o- o- only after the fact.
Right.
You know, that I think Frank had indicated that we would have to get an order into you by September to get them for the spring.
So we would've had to, we would've had to have foresight of ordering them earlier.
The, the issue behind that is. Frank, my grandpa, has told members on the park boards, the council and so on and so forth, for years and years and years. That if you want these trees, you come to us in the fall to order them.
Right, so we would've had to come to you last September for a, for a spring planting, which was another thing that I don't. You know, we weren't talking about planting a boulevard tree, I don't know when we started talking about that, but you know, it was a.
January, probably.
Right, so. But I think, you know, I, I, I think Chris has a good point. We have to, we have to change to how we do things and we have to, you know, in the future, we have more trees to plant. We may end up planting another, it's gonna be eight plus some, we'll be able to, you know, get those from you and going forward, we've learned a, we've learned a valuable lesson as far as ordering trees from you. For that purpose, you know?
Or not, we're just talking about just Williams Fourl, we're there, you know, multiple businesses in town, and we go all the time to do certain business. And it's not, I mean, I get that you cannot always shop that True Value to get by something certain, you know, you can't, I mean, I get that concept, but. When the city is going all their way to buy something, whatever, tell them my tax dollar. I'd like to go with Blake and we're, I don't think I've got a way, you guys might, but I have nothing for my tax dollar, that's all I look at it.
Who guys parks the big pots around on the streets?
Huh?
The big planters on the street.
Those are come from the high school, the high school students, that all comes from them.
They grow them themselves.
Yep, yep, it's part of their classes, yep, I wanted to clarify that too before we were done because I heard that. That was also not bought local and I wanted to make sure that was clarified, that that was done through the high school, it's part of their program, we've done that for years, right?
They, they buy seeds or seedlings or something, I don't know.
Yeah, so that for sure, we, we didn't do that.
So where does the product from Virgin's Nursery come from?
From school.
That's from the school?
School, yep.
And you know who the Virgin sells to? Walmart, Lowe's, Home Depot.
But we, we go, the school.
Why isn't that purchased through your local businesses?
The school, we go through the school because it's part of the school program. You know, we, we want the high school students, the students are doing this as part of their program and then we put them in our planters, it's part of a, it's working with the school. So it has nothing to do with trying to.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, yeah, and that's what I was just gonna say, I mean, that's, it needs to come.
So they purch, so the school purchases it from Virgin's as well?
I don't know, all I know is that the school is.
Yeah, the city had a bill in April from, from Virgin's Greenhouse. And Virgin's Greenhouse doesn't sell seedlings, yeah, I don't know what that was in.
Well, I don't know.
No, no, they're all finished plants, they're all finished plants.
But why would they put them in the greenhouse three months ago? And they're, and they're not. I don't know what the.
Yeah, why is the city paying to that?
Well, the arrangement with the school is, we want plants for the planters, for the big planters out on the, on the Highway Ten. They order the quantity that they need and then we pay for it. Right, yeah, and then Rotary, you know, like Rotary donates money towards it and.
Why they didn't buy them from you, you know? That would be, you know.
And we can do the same.
Right.
I'm just, you can do the same, yeah. It's not local. I'm just looking, I just, I got two, I got this month's bills and last, the last month's from the minutes, I was just kinda curious, you know, kinda going through here, you know, to. There's really, the only one I see on here that I could maybe, would be this Swedberg bill. That, that I would say would. That could've not, yeah, would've should've been yours, the, everything else, when I see anything from. Busker Conquer to Old Town Apparel to, I mean, it's all. It's all local stuff that's on here and, you know, I know we've all tried, you know, obviously, I mean, I don't wanna get, I, I always try to change my shirt and stuff, cause I don't wanna be. A business guy sitting up here, but you know, we all, I, I get it, trust me. And, and you know, I think over the years, I mean, I go back. And I, I was telling Blake this when Blake and I were talking. And I, I don't think, you know, I probably, you know, I try to see him when I have. When I first, probably those first three, four years and I look at Mr. Goff over there that, you know, kinda went through this process too. You know, when you saw things that, you know, came across that you questioned if it was a plumbing company or whatever it might be, you know. Several times I went to Phil and when, back that was when Phil Lindeman was our clerk. And just questioned why we're doing this. And you know, whether it was, some of them were changed, some of them had good reasons and, you know, you, you, you get that answer and you move on. Is there a good reason for this? I, I can't give a good reason, so you know, we, we don't move on, we try to resolve, we try to look forward to the future, so. That's all we can do at this point and, you know, there's some, and I just, you know, just to kinda. Yeah, you're right Blake, in that, you know, the Chamber and Discover Staples and everybody is, is, wants to promote that local. At the same time, that's the, just so you, everybody, those organizations aren't the city of Staples, that's not us.
That name right there.
What's that?
They represent the name.
They absolutely do, but I'm just saying, they don't, we're, they're not represented by it, you, you see what I'm saying? So not that I'm disagreeing with your statement, I'm just making that point. That we all can do better at that, all of us, and not just business, not just the city of Staples, not the Chamber, not. And when I mean all of us, I mean all of us. There's twenty-nine hundred and eighty-one people on that sign and I, this, now I'm speaking as a business owner because. I know twenty-nine hundred and eighty-one people that live in this town don't come to my store. And I'm okay with that if they're going to Ace to get it or wherever. But you know, and I'm not expecting, I've always said, and I think all of us do. We don't expect, I, I would think, and I hope that you kinda look at it this way, is we don't expect everybody to do everything. We're, we're asking for a part. A part, a fair shake. If we can get a fair shake and we can be a part of that, we're all gonna be successful, I mean, I, I don't expect. Yeah. And, and that, so like I said, it's, it's, it's an opportunity not just for a, a learning experience, like Ron said, for those of us up here. Gerald and his staff, but the community as a whole. And, and we, we all as a community can do, do better, I mean, I, there's no doubt, so.
I have a question and I don't know if anybody has the answer, I would like to know. The greenhouse on the corner of Peter and Residential, are they?
What's the word?
How, how is that, how are they, why is my question, I mean, I can't start, I can't start.
That is, is via conditional use permit that was approved by planning and zoning in the council, I don't remember how long.
Like, many years ago, is it after you moved there?
No, it's probably over that, I suppose, I don't know. Six, seven years ago.
So it doesn't have to be, I can say this, you know, everybody else that has a business in town is paying commercial taxes, but they're not, you know, and.
Yeah, cause I, I brought that same issue up about Debbie's plants on the south side to you, Chris, a little, about a year ago. I brought the same issue up to him and he responded with, but Blake, you gotta understand that you're gonna have competition. And I said, I don't care about the competition, I understand that you need competition for businesses. I just want the fair playing field, if I gotta pay commercial taxes down here, why isn't she?
Yeah, and I, you brought it up to me too, and I, I'm like, that's, you know, it's a conditional use permit that had been approved, it's a, it's a conditional use that's identified in the zoning ordinance. Under that single-family residential.
Is that, how long has that lasted, you know?
It runs, runs with the property.
It's like a tattoo, it's forever.
Like a tattoo, yeah.
Unless they don't, unless they don't.
If they discontinue.
If they, if the conditions aren't being met, then it can be taken away, but. I have a question though, and. I, I've, I've, I read and listened to most of the Park and Rec. Minutes that we've discussed here, I, I missed many meetings if any. And I don't recall ever being mentioned, I know it was talked about the trees, but I don't ever recall in there seeing anything about where they were gonna be purchased. Was that decision made by Park and Rec to purchase them or was that decision made somewhere else?
I know, I know that that was on, we, we were told, we weren't. We were told where they were coming from, we weren't, didn't vote on it.
You sure? We were on as a committee?
We didn't, we didn't vote on where, where we purchased them.
What did I, what, what were we gonna pro, purchase?
I think it was just a line item on the agenda, there was no.
So it was a select, a selection of trees.
So Park and Rec didn't have any knowledge of where they were gonna be purchased, you were just talking about planting trees and that was.
Yeah, I think it may have been brought up and it didn't.
I just say, oh, it just seems kinda, I mean, I.
Certainly didn't vote on it.
Just listening to everything, I just, I don't know how you end up in Battle Lake purchasing trees, I just don't. It's kinda weird because, you know, I mean, there's places closer and, and even if you don't do it in town, but. You know, I mean, it just seems kinda odd, but that's, that's all I wanna do.
Another question I have regarding the trees, and you guys might not know the answer, but maybe it could point me in the right direction, but who actually selects the trees and who selects the plants for the planters up and down the city streets? Like selects the specific tree?
The school, you know, it used to be Carrie Lindgren and like, what's Joel? Ramstead, yeah.
He selects the plants?
Right.
Okay, who selects the specific trees?
Um, we brought a variety of trees that were recommended by Swedberg to the Park and Rec Board.
Because of the price tag.
And went through, you know, like Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, tall, medium. You know, tall and skinny, medium, you know, depending on where the placement was gonna be with the buildings, that kinda thing. And I think the Park and Rec Board had John Gordon and Kevin go through and make a recommendation on what trees by.
I'll tell you, I told Blake when I seen they planted a blooming crab apple in front of his business. They wanna see what it has to make, and try to get my kid to cut this down. This cement is purple. You'll never pick that out of there. That's gonna drain in the side of his business. That's a terrible tree. So whoever planted that didn't know much about trees.
And the other thing about crab apple trees, specifically trees and selecting trees, crab apple trees can't take road salt when the plows go by every day in the winter. And that's, that's part of the issue why you guys are replacing these trees every three, four years. It's because nobody's putting any thought into what trees go in the ground in your four foot square. Nobody puts any thought into that. And then yet again, we'll just buy eighteen more trees from Swedberg Nursery out of Battle Lake, Minnesota.
Well, I think there was, there was thought put into it. We didn't just, well, it may not be the right thought, it might be wrong according to you, but I wanna just correct that there was thought and we are struggling with how to get them to grow. But it wasn't that we just bought trees and pumped them in the ground. We did try to figure out a way we had, we did, uh, construction soil or we, we, there was thought put into it, okay? We're, we are struggling with some of the trees, but we did put thought into it, so. Maybe it was not, it maybe wasn't correct, it maybe wasn't according to your expertise, but we did put some thought into it.
Hold on, stop. Do we think about which way the roads go?
I'm not gonna answer that, cause I'm just telling you to, you know.
We made for sidewalks. I mean, if you have trees that go sideways, why are we paying for these beautiful sidewalks just to get them?
Well, they didn't even make it that far, so. The trees didn't even make it that far to wipe up the sidewalks.
Yeah, I, I agree with the, the planters. You know, there's, there's the wrong plants, you know, my ten-year-old walked by and said, why are these begonias?
Yep.
Out in the middle of the sunshine.
Yeah, yeah.
And I said, I have no clue, cause they're a sheet plant. And, and I mentioned at a, at a Park and Rec meeting a while ago that I would donate one of my city council checks to better substrate in those planters, cause there's more sand in those, in those big pots along Highway ten than there is in Dow Beach. And it needs better, a better foundation or they're gonna, you know, anybody can put them in the ground, but for them to succeed, that's, we're, we're set up, setting ourselves up to fail.
Yep. Well, and that, and again, I, I, you know, I, I always try to, I mean, the whole situation isn't fun, it's bad and we all acknowledge that. But at the same time, you know, there's, let's try to find, you know, something moving forward and one of those is the flowers. Let's, you know, with the Park and Rec and you and I don't know, Joe, whoever the school person is, um, work more closely on that, work together. Let's, let's figure that out. Let's, let's figure out the trees. Let's, you know, like I said, it's, there's an opportunity here. That's what we need to find now because we know that there was a failure before, so now we have to look for the opportunity.
Is one of those opportunities a tax break?
Is it what?
One of those opportunities a tax break.
A tax break.
He's twenty-two. I just, I just, that's, that's a hard game to ask you. I was lucky at twenty-two. I remember, I remember. At twenty-two, you look at me and
Yeah, I don't.
We got a light bulb there.
Yeah, no, I get it.
You know, that's like saying move forward, get past it.
Yep.
But if we're standing there swinging a sword to cut off one of my arms, there's really a move forward, you know, that one is gone.
Yep.
How do you make up for it? There has to be.
And you don't, and you really can't make up for that. You make up for it by having the con, this, starting this conversation in the future. That's all you make up for it.
And purchase trees in the future. You know, we're gonna be purchasing more trees yet this spring. So.
Summer.
Summer.
Thanks, guys.
Yep, thank you.
Blake?
Yeah.
Alright, anybody?
Appreciate the discussion.
Any other open forum? Okay, we'll move on to city administrators report.
Uh, just a, a few items. Uh, did interviews for a police officer position again back on the first of June. And I believe there's a background being done, uh, for a potential full-time officer. Uh, Scott and I met with Leroy, Shane and a couple of reps from ICS, um, up at the high school parking lot, um, at Third Street and Pleasant Avenue. They're gonna be redoing that parking lot with some curb and gutter, trying to change entrance and drainage. Um, and, uh, just looking at, you know, where the curb lines are gonna be, you know, how we're gonna, uh, increase the storm sewer capacity at that intersection, which right now is not adequate for the amount of drainage that's going into it. So I think we've, uh, got a, uh, solution to that, uh, problem as far as pipe size and catch base and, uh, inlets and, um, as I think most of you know, that, that storm sewer actually runs underneath the parking lot. There's east-west leg runs underneath the parking lot, underneath the football field. Uh, and over to just south of the water tower over there. So that's where all of that water goes. Looking at trying to fix that up, they're gonna have a lot of that ripped up, uh, so we wanna get our, our inlet structures back down to the ground. If you go over and look at it, they've heaved up probably four inches or so. So that will be a, a project that we're gonna be, uh, working on. Scott talked a lot about the whole, um, you know, energy, uh, webinar that we participated in. Um, I won't give you my opinion as to where we're, where we're at, but, um, uh, then capital improvement plan, uh, working with, uh, departments to start working on the next five-year, uh, CIP and get that information to council. That is all I have.
Charter commission, charter commissioner, are we meeting in July?
July, oh, Mary Jo's not here. She's the secretary. Probably tell you.
Mary Jo is.
Yeah.
That's right.
Thirteenth or twentieth?
I was thinking it was the thirteenth, but I don't have it on here.
I don't have it either.
I'll look and send it.
Said it a year ago, you know, we.
It wasn't there.
I wrote it on my hand.
Oh, I guess, yeah.
But anyway, I'll, uh, I'll get a normal soccer.
Okay.
This is about a month away, so.
I move that way adjourned.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Roy, second by Ron, to adjourn. All those paper?
Aye.
Aye.